So a couple of things before we get started that I feel I need to clarify to the board and to the public. One of them is that the resolution that was brought forward at our last board meeting to form the Sag Harbor Improvement Corporation should not have been placed under action items. It should have been placed under a discussion item. And there was no disrespect meant to any of the board members, not trying to pull a fast one over anybody's eyes. That's the reason we're here. We want to discuss this. As I read through the resolution, I could see that there was room to work on this and get input from not only the board but also from the public. Something that's this big and this important needs to have public input and also input from the board. I've been coming to the meetings, the board meetings, for those of you that don't know, for over a decade. And a lot of the issues, issues with the firehouses, issues with this building have continually come up. And it's been made clear to me and to other board members that the status quo is not going to work. We need to get creative. We need to come up with a plan to fully utilize this building and other assets within the village. These assets belong to the taxpayer. It's a taxpayer property that is not being fully utilized. Every year that we go to do the budget, we're cutting our discretionary spending, we're looking at ways to save, but there's costs in the village that continue to go up. Labor costs, costs for insurance, and there's a gap. We continue to take money out of our reserves to meet that gap. That cannot continue. These projects, to do them, would be a tremendous burden on the residents and the taxpayers. And like I said, we need to get creative. We need to do something. There's two things I'm not going to do as mayor. I'm not going to do this job alone, and I'm not going to do it with fear. We're going to throw ideas out there, we're going to place them out there, and we're going to work on them together. I want this work session and anything we do in the future to be a vigorous debate, but to be respectful. Let's try to work, let's work together to come up with a solution. Not just take the idea and throw it out the window. I don't think that that's constructive. Because what's the answer? If you say this is not going to work, okay, what are we going to do moving forward? What's the answer? So with that, trustee Corsh has come up with a couple of resolutions that he would like to present. We both agreed that he was going to read them. And then after we get public input and public discussion, the board will vote on them. So I'll turn it over to trustee Corsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say one thing about the items that, the resolution that showed up as an action item, it did not say draft. And I think anybody who's worked with lawyers, attorneys over the years know that saying draft on the draft is like closing the automobile door before you drive off. And so we were left with no other option than to assume it was what it was. We can only deal with what is put in front of us. We can only comment on that. There was ample opportunity prior to the meeting to notify us that this was an issue, that it was a mistake. I've seen it described as clumsy in the newspaper. I can think of lots of words to describe it. Clumsy wouldn't be one of them. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and read my resolutions. Incorporating Village of Sag Harbor Resolution to disband the Capital Planning Advisory Committee. Whereas the Village of Sag Harbor established a Capital Planning Advisory Committee by resolution adopted on April 9, 2024, to assist and advise the mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Sag Harbor, Inc., the board, in assessment and formation of a vehicle or vehicles to support the development and execution of the village capital program and to facilitate economic development opportunities for the village and. Whereas the committee is advisory to the mayor and Board of Trustees, and where specifically the committee was created to perform the following functions in its guidance to the village Board of Trustees: responsibilities and duties. All responsibilities and duties are advisory to the mayor and Board of Trustees. The committee may not expend village funds, retain consultants, use existing village consultants and/or employees, or take actions on behalf of the Board of Trustees without approval by resolution of the Board of Trustees. And here are the various actions and requirements for this committee. One, identify and assess the village's capital planning needs and opportunities. Two, support the development of a village capital plan. Three, identify alternate sources of funding and transactional structures that can be achieved to enhance the village capital program. Four, investigate, analyze, and prioritize opportunities to enhance the village capital program and economic development projects on behalf of the village. Five, coordinate the development of draft plans for board review and approval. Example, initial budget, financial models, and governance recommendations. Six, make recommendations to the board on sustained engagement of key community stakeholders, including residents and community groups. Seven, report regularly to the Board on the CPAC activities. Eight, perform any other activities consistent with this charter that the board deems necessary or appropriate. Nine, review the committee's charter at least annually and submit any recommended changes to the board for review and approval. Whereas to date, the committee has not provided any reports or advice to the village Board of Trustees performing any of the above referenced tasks. And whereas instead, the committee proposed a resolution authorizing the creation of a local development corporation without identifying or assessing any of the village's capital planning needs, without the development or adoption of an approved village capital plan, without addressing or identifying opportunities to enhance the capital program, without reporting to the village Board of Trustees on any matter via report, memo, or appearing at a board meeting to present to the Board of Trustees, without making any recommendations with respect to capital planning projects or otherwise to this board. And whereas, as a result, the Capital Planning Committee failed to adequately inform the village Board of Trustees on any matter referenced above and failed to adhere to its own charter. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Sag Harbor Planning Advisory Committee is hereby disbanded, and be it further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized to advise the committee members that the committee was disbanded and their services are no longer required.
If I could just comment on that briefly, a lot of the points that you make in there, Aiden, are good points, and I would agree with them. Things that need to be done, that need to be addressed. But I will not, and I'm going to tell you right now how I'm going to vote, I will not vote to disband a committee of our residents and our citizens that have volunteered. These are stakeholders, these are intelligent people that have investment in this village, as well as everybody else. I am not going to vote against to disband or to disband a volunteer committee. The Architectural Review Board, the Harbor Committee, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, the Sag Harbor Fire Department, the Sag Harbor Ambulance, Save Sag Harbor, the Sag Harbor Partnership, all these groups have one thing in common, and the Capital Planning Committee. They're all volunteers, they're all residents and citizens of this village. So I'm just letting you know, I agree with a lot of the points that you pointed out, and they need to be added to what we're doing. That's very constructive. I'm for that, but I am not for disbanding a volunteer committee. That's just my point.
Make a comment?
Sure.
The seven members of this board were selected arbitrarily. The seven members of this board were of the local, the... The seven members of the advisory committee were handpicked from, I think by trustee.
I think I know where you, Bob, if I can, Bob, I think that what trustee Plumb, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, that your issue is that, that the committee, oh, you turned it off. That's good. I think it's, turn everybody off, Aiden.
I know, but this is not working. We don't have a working microphone.
If I could speak, Bob, I think that what you're trying to say is that the committee was handpicked by myself and trustee deputy mayor, hey, that there was no input from the board on who's on that committee. So one of the things, as I was reading through the resolution, is the appointment of volunteers to the board. Now, I believe it should work the way that we do any other board, which is I put names forward after consulting with everyone, and then the board votes to ratify. That's the way it should be. So that's something that I think that should be corrected.
You're talking about...
Am I, is that what you're trying to say?
I'm sorry, but you're talking about the Capital Planning Advisory Committee.
I'm talking about, if you're going to talk about all the committees, I'm going to talk about all the committees. And that, we, the board is supposed to weigh in on all the candidates.
Absolutely.
And the board taking it as far as we want to the public, for public input, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so did that happen in this case? Not to my...
Well, wait, hang on a second. We're in the process of this, okay? I read through the resolution. That's one of the things that I want to change, but there was.
You're talking about the Capital Planning Advisory Committee?
We did have a vote and approved the members. We did approve the charter.
The full board approved the members on April 9.
Right. If there's somebody you want to add to that, or you feel needs to be added, certain, or if you had a question about any committee member, you had full opportunity. Right. I don't, I look...
Let's get back to Aiden's point. You had a charter. At that same April 9 meeting, we passed a charter, as well as the members.
Correct.
The charter is specific into what Aiden has said.
Correct.
How did this resolution in any way follow those guidelines? And how is, our village attorney is not here.
She's...
She's sick, I get that. But from, thank you, but from Beech Harris, who's a person who, as far as I know, we hired as an advisory committee of purse capacity. We didn't ask for a resolution for a law, we asked for the same thing that we asked you for, which was advice.
It was actually general advice, is how it's worded in our resolution and in the letter of engagement.
Right. So...
And we've not received that.
Right. Okay, so the resolution, the resolution was pulled, okay?
It was pulled. Let's make this clear to the public.
If anybody's responsible, it's me, okay? Because, no, the buck stops with me, okay? The resolution should have been under discussion items, not action items.
Then why did it not say draft? Maybe our attorney who drafted could tell us why this resolution didn't contain the word draft on the cover.
The point, the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is, this is what I would like to do. I would like us all to agree that doing the status quo is not working, that we need a vehicle to achieve our goals. We need together to come up with something. And a lot of the points that you make, Aiden, are valid points. We need to do that.
Let me make some suggestions to that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. LDC. I have two columns here. I have a CPAC column and a LDC column. Let's redirect focus to individual LDCs for individual projects, if we need them. The firehouse, the fire museum, municipal voting, et cetera. Number two, village Board of Trustees to choose all capital projects by resolution based on recommendations from CPAC. Development, get our development, construction plans in place, get some estimates, and then create a comparison of if, what the cost would be to the village if the village managed the project, or if we created an LDC to manage the project. The decision to create bespoke LDCs for any project is to be decided by the village Board of Trustees by resolution. Each LDC will have a lifespan appropriate to the scope of the associated project. Each LDC has a board of directors appropriate to the associated projects. These projects are not one size fits all. If we're going to have a project, we could have, we should maybe have an architect on board. Maybe we have a commercial real estate person on board. There's a whole host of talents that are required to make these projects successful. It's not, you know, we got the same group of people on CPAC. Oh my God, they show up as the same group of people on the LDC as the board, and they were supposed to have the all-seeing, all-knowing board that can take care of every project and every detail. I just don't agree.
That's inaccurate, to make that statement. That's, that's, come on.
But I can have it right here.
No, but you're making assumptions on something that hasn't even been adopted yet.
Well, this was presented, okay.
So here's the thing, Aiden, you can either, wait, wait a second. No, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you there. I don't, I'm not going to sit here and have you attack members of the community that are volunteering.
What is plain in front of my eyes, that the board of CPAC is the board of the LDC. Is that not correct?
No, that's not correct, Aiden.
That's not correct.
Throw up, Paul. Everyone's against it. Don't be afraid to find out. Take us for a poll right now.
I'll continue if you don't...
With the people in this room are against it. So what's the solution then?
Well, let me finish reading here. If I could continue, if I may continue without interruption.
You can continue, go ahead.
Two village Board of Trustees members plus the village treasurer to serve on all LDC boards. All other appointed members are limited to serving to one LDC board at any time. LDC boards should be limited to a total of seven members, including trustees and treasurer. Create a bespoke resolution to create the various LDCs to be approved by the village Board of Trustees. The resolution that we received, that was part of this whole episode, is not suitable for the village of Sag Harbor. I mean, if anybody takes time to read it, it is so broad-ranging. It was never meant for a community like ours. We do not need community development. We just need to sustain our community. We need to manage our community. We do not need to create employment here. We can hardly fill the jobs that we have. And frankly, I don't feel the need to be rescued from the burden of governance, which is the fifth aspect of that. Nothing in that resolution has any relevance to the lives we live and the vision that we have for the future. And having said that, I think we should complete our master plan before we even think about any... So I'm not... Create LDC bylaws to be approved by the village Board of Trustees. Throw out what we've received already. Let's create something that works for our village. And include our village attorney in all future LDC activities. And now for CPAC. Hit the reset button. I would like to appoint Bob Plum to CPAC if it's going to stay the way it is, if we lose this vote. Well, we'll see one-year terms for members, and members may be reappointed. Members must be appointed individually and not as a group. Village Board of Trustees should be presented with options, and village Board of Trustees members to have one nomination each. Limit the number of village committees that any one person could be appointed to. Provide assurance that CPAC will operate within its charter at all times in the future. Keep minutes of every CPAC meeting. Subject CPAC to the open meeting law. All CPAC recommendations to the village Board of Trustees are by majority vote of the CPAC committee. And provide monthly reports of CPAC activities to our village Board of Trustees meetings. And I'm done now, Mayor. I'm yours. Thank you.
I agree with everything you just said, as far as the meetings being open, keeping minutes, reporting to the board. This is all part of what we're trying to do. I'm 100% behind that. So with that being said, I'd like to, we have a presentation to make about the Sag Harbor Improvement Corporation.
Can I say one more thing, please?
Sure.
When this was, we were sitting on this dais at the last meeting, and we opened our books, and we saw this law. And I've granted it, maybe it was a mistake, but it didn't say draft, et cetera, et cetera. So just at that moment, we said, we can't vote on this. I don't even know what this is. I don't even know what a LDC is, frankly. I didn't. And so quickly, Tom, to his credit, say, well, let's forget that. We won't vote on that. We'll talk about that tonight. But Ed Hay and Jean Kane sat here silent. That is tacit consent, as far as I'm concerned. Because if Ed realized that this was a mistake, I think he should have said something.
I did immediately, and I told Aiden, whoa, we're pulling.
Did you tell anybody else?
Anybody else? No, I said, we're going to, he said, we're going to schedule a workshop. That's what this is for, to discuss the proposals.
Can you, I don't want to drag this too far, but one more, sir. How did that wind up on the agenda as an action item? Just curious. Who told Kate presumably to put that on in that form, in that resolution, in that form?
I was told that they just wanted it on. All resolutions are typically an action item. That's where I put it. It was, it was okay.
So it's my mistake for not telling her we should introduce, not put it on as an action item. My mistake.
So then, so then you think that that law, the way...
Resolution.
Resolution. If it was a discussion item, that was an appropriate...
Yes.
...way to approach this subject?
Yes.
With a completely, you know, by the way, if you cut and paste and search those terms, sorry, Mr. Attorney, but they show up, and it's a boilerplate document. It shows up in Rochester, New York, all kinds of places. Anyway, I don't know, maybe I forgot, but I don't get a lot of pushback from you with that, or you didn't say, oh my God, we messed this up. It's not supposed to be on this slate, because it was there.
Because before the meeting started, we pulled it.
We pulled it? You didn't pull it?
No, that's... Listen, I don't want to get into, I said that the buck stops with me. I took it off. It shouldn't have been there. I took it off. We need to discuss it. I'm glad we're having this discussion. I'm glad that the trustees are engaging on this, and they're bringing up concerns about it. The main thing, and Aiden, I respect what you said about maintaining the status quo, but we can't do that and have the building around us fall down.
That's not what I said. I listed all these individual LDCs. I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
Right. So there, so let's work on it together and form something that's going to work, that we can agree on.
But I've got to say that the fact that this resolution came in front of us at all in controversy, in contravention of every single thing the charter of CPAC contains, there was, we never, I don't want to go back over it, but I don't want us to forget either, that the first thing we get from CPAC is sort of an oven-ready LDC to look at, right? With no discussion, no identifying, what's this, what's this LDC supposed to be addressing?
That was a mistake, and I said it was a mistake.
That's a huge, long-term mistake. It's not like, oops, I tripped.
Nothing's been adopted. We're having a discussion. We're working together. No, that's not what happened. No, we didn't.
Well, where did all the documentation come from? We have this gentleman here at $650 an hour preparing documents for us. That's not by mistake.
Are you finished?
I think I might be for five.
I hope you're not finished, because we're going to need your input and trustee Plumb's to get this right. So if you want to, you want to present?
Yes, I'd like to. I'd like to spend a little time speaking about CPAC, how it came about, the members of CPAC, CPAC's role, CPAC's charter, and what CPAC has been doing. The purpose and role of the Capital Planning Advisory Committee is to begin a capital planning process for the village of Sag Harbor. The committee, as the mayor has mentioned, is made up of very talented public servants and community members who are deeply committed to this village. The mayor, Tom Gardella, is one of the members of the committee. He's also the chief budget officer for the village. Again, this is the Capital Planning Committee. He's the commissioner of police, fire commissioner. He's owned a local business in the village, and he's been a tireless public service for both the volunteer fire department and the ambulance corps. Another member of CPAC is sitting here.
Charles Brucey, I'm the treasurer. I've been on board since October. Prior to that, I worked almost 20 years at Canon on Long Island, both as a chief accounting officer for the US, as well as CFO for their printing business. Prior to that, I've worked at Moody's, and I started as, and still am, CPA in the state of New York.
There are other CPAC members who are away, dialing in. I'm going to go through a brief summary of each member for those who aren't here. Rania Cohen is another member of the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Committee. She's a season fund manager. She serves on the Sag Harbor Village Planning Board, Sag Harbor School Board, and she's a local business owner in Sag Harbor. She's well versed in developing business plans, strategic planning, working with legal counsel, auditors, and regulators. Another member of the Capital Planning Committee is Nat Agosi. Nat's here today. I'm happy to give the summary, Nat. You're welcome to do it yourself, of your own extensive background and what you bring to CPAC.
We've vetted these people already.
It's okay, just...
Yeah, you know, my name is Nat Agosi, lifelong member of the community.
Shouldn't we be up here, presumably?
Come on up. Come on up to the podium, Matt. It's up above you.
Your mic's up above you, yeah.
It's in the ceiling.
Oh, it's in the ceiling. All right. It's in what I know. Anyway, my name is Nat Agosi.
Just speak up. They can, they'll hear you.
My name is Nat Agosi. I'm a lifelong member of this community. I'm a licensed professional engineer in 26 different states. I'm the president and owner of an engineering company that I started from 35 years ago. We specialize, my company specializes in building, environmental, municipal infrastructure projects. I thought whatever would suit, five or 500 kinds of projects, all the different kinds of projects for the village. We need to consider, we need to consider the kind of projects that my company does, but they used to know and know where to go. In addition to that, I'm owner of the Sag Harbor Inn. It's open out there in the village. December, it commits on 35 years. I also own a business here on Main Street, some doors down, some mixed-use building. I was asked by the mayor to join this, maybe to assist in doing my professional experience, my knowledge of the community, also just as active.
Thank you. Thank you, Nat. Another member of the Capital Planning Advisory Committee is Greg Ferraris. Greg is the head of GN Ferraris CPA, a full-service public accounting firm that provides tax consulting and attestation services to diversified clients throughout the area. He's the former mayor of the village of Sag Harbor, former chairman of the planning board of the village of Sag Harbor. He's also involved in many civic organizations. He's currently the president and treasurer of both the Sag Harbor Community Housing Trust and the Rudishan Educational Trust, and the treasurer of the South Full Conic Landing, another nonprofit. Another member of the Capital Planning Advisory Committee is Susan Mead. Susan Mead's a founding member of Save Sag Harbor, the Sag Harbor Partnership, and the Sag Harbor Cinema. Prior to locating, relocating in Sag Harbor, she served as a partner in a major US law firm for many years with a lot of experience in handling zoning and land use matters nationally. She has a client base of architects, developers, working in residential, industrial, affordable, and mixed use housing, and she's absolutely an expert in historical preservation. And I'm the last member of the Capital Planning Advisory Committee. I'm serving as a trustee and deputy mayor. I'm a board member of the Parks and Recreation Association of Sag Harbor, a former Sag Harbor school member, school board member for seven years. I'm a member of the First National Bank of Long Island Board, partner in a law firm, Colin and Dykman, and I was deputy general counsel and chief regulatory counsel for the largest water and wastewater investor-owned utility in the country. These CPAC members that were approved by board resolution just a couple of months ago, on April 9, came together for the first time in March of this year.
Before they were approved?
Came together, yep.
Before.
Before, approved by the village Board of Trustees as an official group to discuss intended areas of focus. They were recruited to see if they could work together on capital planning for the village of Sag Harbor. All had diverse skill sets that many of us agreed were important for the village. The group meets virtually, and so it met twice in March, the same time we were going through the village budgeting process. We were holding budgeting meetings on March 14, the 21st, and 27th. CPAC met twice, not a CPAC, just a group of people saying, what's a good charter? What's a good scope of work for this group to focus on? We presented that charter to the village board, as well as a Q and A that you have in March, to this board on the 21st of March, I believe. We presented it again on the 28th of March, and then we presented it again on April 9, and this board voted to approve all of those members and approve CPAC as an advisory committee to the board.
And the charter.
And the charter, on April 9, correct. Two different resolutions. And then we started working as of April 9, as an advisory board that includes all the people we've just laid out. Charles, would you take a little bit from here?
Sure. I'm going to give a little bit of background about what capital planning is and where the village stands. You know, it's important to note that while the village, like most municipalities, owns and operates many facilities and owns capital assets, we in particular have not historically prepared forward-looking capital plans. The mayor, trustees, and I have discussed this during the village's annual budgeting process, as Ed referred to it, and also during my recruitment back in October. It was one of the primary attributes. They were looking for an experienced financial... They were looking for an experienced financial person to help move the village beyond the annual, just its annual budgeting process. So what's a capital plan? It's a multi-year roadmap of future capital expenditures and projects that are deemed essential for maintaining or improving the village's infrastructure and service levels. You know, a capital asset is any expenditure that benefits multiple periods, multiple fiscal years. So, you know, you may spend money on supplies or very short-term things that'll be consumed within a year. Those are expensed, but infrastructure, equipment, construction that benefits multiple periods is a capital asset and obviously comes with different considerations, particularly around financing. What happens when you don't have a capital plan? And, and we don't, as I said, you know, if ignored, capital planning is ignored. Assets will deteriorate, leaving the village board in reactionary mode without having a roadmap as to what you own and when it was last rehabilitated or renewed or replaced. It's hard. Sometimes you get caught by surprise that all of a sudden something breaks down or you have a major repair that wasn't anticipated. Advanced planning allows for the orderly evaluation of those assets as well as the funding sources and the resources to conduct the planning exercise. Not having a plan usually will result in additional costs and delays. Also, time-sensitive opportunities that arise from time to time may be lost as we may not have the resource to act quickly or the access to financing to get it done. And then, not finally, but fourth, the elected officials will not have a formal roadmap to pass on to their successors. So in some cases, you may have administrations recreating the wheel or rethinking what has already been done. There's a few steps in a capital process. I won't go into a lot of detail, but they basically encompass assessing the current situation. You know, what do we own? What is its state of usefulness and repair? And also surveying all of responsible village officials in terms of what is their perspective and community members. What is their perspective on what is needed in the future? Maybe things we don't have now, maybe something different from what we're doing today. Also identifying funding alternatives. Today, we've basically used our annual budget to fund most of our expenditures, debt for some of our larger expenditures, most recently down at the docks, and then grants. We've been very successful in getting money brought into the village from outside, and that's obviously the best way to go because that's free money. And what we're going to talk about with the LDC today is the flexibility that gives us to use what we'll call alternative financing structures. It's an alternative financing structure that allow us to fund some of these larger projects that we can't do today. And we'll explain that in more detail why that, that's the case. And then largely in the plan, the last step in the plan is to prioritize. After you have listed out what you want to do or what you think you need to do, is to create a priority based on the urgency, whether it's an asset that needs to be repaired or replaced or a project that maybe for some reason we want to do it sooner because maybe there's grant money or there's favorable financing costs. So we create a priority list that's then reviewed and approved by the trustees. Throughout the budget process, I've met with the village department heads as well as the mayor and the trustees to talk about our current situation, and we started to create this capital plan. It's by no means complete. It's in the very initial stages, but we've started the process and we've really kind of defined the process. And we'll hope to implement this as part of our next budget cycle, at least in its preliminary stages. I think Ed will now talk about, you know, some of the high priority projects that we haven't addressed through the budget process, frankly, because we don't have the money. At this point, to do more than we've currently done, and we spend maybe three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on capital expenditures. Most of that is vehicles, equipment, some repairs to the facilities. To go much beyond that, our budget without raising taxes above the cap, our budget can't, won't pay for that. We'd have to cut other crucial services out.
And the fact is, we've got a lot of capital planning needs right now, high priority capital needs that we don't know how to pay for, that aren't in the budget, that haven't, that, these needs have existed for years, haven't been in the budget for years. One, one is.
Let's get the list. What's the top? What's the top? I think it's probably.
Thank you. Next slide. Water quality management. Investment will be required to divert, contain, and filter untreated stormwater and groundwater currently re-directly into our bays. This, this to remediate would require significant capital investment. These are not small projects. To remediate water quality of, just thinking Havens Beach alone, over a hundred and fifty acres of stormwater land flows out through Havens Beach, full of coliform fecal matter. We've got studies now that show this. We've had this for years. The same is true for Otter Pond. We've got three outlet pipes of unfiltered water with fecal matter flowing into Otter Pond, into the Upper Cove, into Redwood. We've got two. The Beacon and Windmill Beach, both stormwater outflows, no filtration, straight into the bays.
May I ask you a question?
If you, if I could, if I could continue, because the question's asked and I'd like to go through the priority lists.
Okay, I was interrupted a number of times, but go ahead.
Could we go to the next slide, please?
I apologize for that.
Pedestrian safety is another significant capital investment need that faces this village, that's faced this village for years. We have to improve many sidewalks that seem to be in a persistent state of disrepair. We've got to, we want to put sidewalks in places where they don't exist to improve safety of the pedestrians. Can you go to the next slide? I'll try to go through this as quickly as I can. Traffic relief. Traffic relief is something that's clearly become more obvious to this village since COVID. We need to calm the speed and congestion of traffic throughout the village while encouraging other forms of transportation, namely walking, biking. But this requires investment too, to our open spaces, to our roads, to our sidewalks. Next, please. Municipal services. Capital investment, significant capital investment, we're required to improve our municipal operations center for our Department of Public Works, our ambulance corps, and our fire department. Plans have been done for many of these things over the last decade plus, but the money is still not available to get it done. Next, please. Waterfront protection and access. Significant capital investment, we're required to improve our docks, our waterfront access, and our open spaces. Next, please. Flood protection. To, to protect our roadways, our parking areas from water damage. Once again, significant capital investment.
Where does the money come from?
We'll get to that. For this, for a lot of this work, the money needs to come from, in some places, it'll, it'll be bonded in some places, in some places from grants, but what, what we, what we are charged to look with here are for alternative funding sources as well. If I could continue, please. Next slide, please. Wastewater, I'm sorry, yes, wastewater treatment. Given that time passes quickly, our water quality is of the utmost importance. The village will need capital investment to upgrade an automated sewer treatment plant. As all of us know, these capital investment needs are not new. They've all been known for a long time, but they keep getting deferred, and there is no roadmap of the process to implement the work. It just keeps building up, and the cost to increase, the cost to address them keeps increasing as well. Moving forward, these high priority municipal projects can each cost tens of millions of dollars. And where does that money come from? This village has a very small tax base. And these are really important projects that need to be funded. The projects are most likely to be funded through bonds, increase in village property taxes to village residents and building owners, and hopefully by grants as well. Together with the findings of the village treasurer, CPAC reviewed and identified the consequences of capital projects not having been implemented, as well, as well as other village assets that have been neglected for decades and that are either unutilized. Next slide, please. Havens Beach. I learned to swim at that beach sixty years ago. It's a blighted area, twenty acres of land, the only swimming beach in the village of Sag Harbor. Polluted by stormwater from over a hundred and fifty acres. No investment has gone into that property for a long time, and as a result, it is underutilized. Next slide, please. That's this building. That's the top floor of this building. This building has four floors. You don't see anything happen past this second floor because the top two floors are basically unusable, unsafe to use. This is a wasted asset in the heart of the village. Next slide, please. This is the fire regime. It's a building that sits on the northeast corner of Church and Sage Street. It's valuable in its own right. It was constructed by the First Presbyterian Church as a session has some lecture hall before they built the current Old Whalers Church. Back in the eighteen forties, it served as the home of the Woodward family, and then it was sold to the village in eighteen fifty-six. It was used at the, first as a schoolhouse and then as village hall. It later became the fire department's hounds engine company and that later changed its name to the Montauk Coase Company. Was that your company?
That's my company, yes.
And they used the building until nineteen seventy-six. This building is unusable. If our community doesn't have access to alternative funding sources for these assets and improvement projects, they will likely continue to be neglected, and in some cases, that will never be addressed until it's too late. We've heard suggestions that we should form separate LDCs for every project. There are many concerns with that approach that we should discuss. One is the administrative burden that would be for multiple LDC projects is enormous. I won't go into those now because I'm not fully familiar with them, but I know the reporting requirements are going to be significant. And the management requirements of multiple corporations will be significant. But in, in addition to that.
I have a question.
If, if I could continue, you can, I, I let you get all of your comments in. I didn't say.
Hold on, continue, Aiden. Just give, give him a minute. Go ahead.
If you could write your question down.
No, I won't. I'll just speak to the question.
Okay.
All right, go ahead. Finish it.
What other, what other assets can a capital, can an LDC be used for? It can be used to acquire new assets. And that's important. Assets that are privately owned or utility owned become commercially available in this village from time to time. And they can be acquired by the village board if it so chooses to do so. These sales are time-sensitive, attract a lot of purchasers, and have their own plans to monetize the purchase. We know that because of the perceived lack of available, sustainable, and affordable funding and the lack of a capital plan ready to act on such opportunities as they arise, that the village has missed out recently on many opportunities to acquire vital assets that are important to this community. Yes, you can. Next slide, please. Parking. The village doesn't have the tools or a capital plan in place, and thus was unable to acquire an asset that could permanently secure parking availability in the village business and office district. Vital for its residents and local employees. The gas ball lot could have been acquired as, by the LDC as an arm of the village. The village would have been able to direct the LDC to improve the lot's surfaces with safe pavement, landscaping, and stormwater treatment structures. The purchase price and the improvement cost could have been financed, and the debt could have been repaid by parking fees collected from the use of the lot. This in turn would have freed the village to do other things, to improve other parking within the village. The savings would be applied toward other parking lots already owned by the village to improve the service. It's important for us to understand a concept called opportunity cost. Opportunity cost represents the potential benefits we miss out on when we choose one alternative versus another. The opportunity cost of choice, of that choice is the value we lose by not pursuing the next best option. There was an opportunity choice in not being ready to act on this. There are other situations where this occurs, where this has already occurred recently. And we might choose not to take advantage of these, but not having the choice is problematic from my perspective. We were successful in acquiring the property that's now Steinbeck Park with CPF funds. We were unsuccessful in completing that vision of, of waterfront access and open space by acquiring neighboring properties. There were negotiations that were going on from the time I was appointed to the village trustee three years ago between the property owner and CPF. And the parties were not that far apart. If an LDC were in place then, we could have bridged that gap. If, if it took an increment amount of money to bridge the gap between what CPF was, was offering and what the owner was asking for, those properties could be village-owned now potentially. And, and maybe the village board would have decided, having looked at a financial analysis and a feasibility study, that it was worth its effort to do so. Maybe it wouldn't have, but we lost the opportunity, and the opportunity cost for that is passed. There are future opportunities, current opportunities, pending opportunities in front of this village right now of additional assets that potentially could be looked at, reviewed, and frankly, funded from revenue sources that they could create for the village. Sure. I can give a couple of examples. Outside of the village, there's a property that someone wants to develop for affordable housing, middle-income housing, and. Free of charge, cool. It won't be free of charge.
That would be nice.
So you said outside the village, outside the property.
There's a property.
That village taxpayers should purchase?
No, I did not say that. I said outside the prop, outside of the village, there is a property that a developer would like to build middle-income housing on and medical, medical offices in the front. Both needs of the community. This is. What that person has talked to the village about is transferring the housing to the village in exchange for an annuity.
Can we define the village in this conversation? Because they certainly didn't talk to me.
That's right. You're, you're right. They certainly didn't talk to you. The LDC, you would need an LDC to do that.
But who do they talk to in the village? Somebody, obviously, you just said.
Clearly talked to me.
Okay, so they talked to you. So let's be specific here.
Wait, hold on a second.
No, my head. Just take that example and walk us through what the, how the LDC, what the mechanics would be to purchase that property or to do the annuity.
So the LDC would have to, the LDC would have to do a feasibility study, would have to do a financial analysis of the cost to construct, and in fact, that property owner would work with us on that theoretically, hopefully. And then what revenue stream would be generated that from middle-income people who would live there? The annuity he would be required from us could, could be funded by all or part of that annuity. Would there be a shortfall? We don't know, but whatever the analysis would be, the analysis would be. We would present that to the village board, and the village board would say, yes, we're, we would like that, or no, we don't think we should pursue that.
Okay, let's say the people decided to pursue. Where does?
This LDC.
The money would be bonded. You'd have to, you'd go to bond.
Yeah, that's, that's.
No, it would not be, it would not hit the tax rolls because the, the idea, the idea of this being pursued is that revenue streams, the whole idea of an LDC is that it's for projects that have both municipal function and commercial function, or in that case, non, pure non-municipal function. And, and in that situation, I would recommend we do a completely separate LDC for that opportunity. But there are other opportunities that I could say.
Can I commit to comment real quick on an LDC?
I will make sure.
I think, I think it's important for people to understand that LDCs are not advised by the state comptroller's office. There is two reports out on LDCs. LDCs operate outside of the village authority. So once they're born, I'll just go with the state comptroller's office, right?
He's in?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ron. I hear what you're saying. You'll get your chance for public comment. You will get your chance for public comment, I promise. You will get your chance for public comment, I promise you. I promise you, but I'd like to. Thank you, Ron, we will. We'll get to them. We're still talking about the capital planning needs and how alternative funding sources like LDCs can be used. We can dive into the details of an LDC, we have an expert lawyer here on the details of.
This was a workshop on LDC, not capital planning.
I will say this and this is important.
You're filling up the time with.
Capital planning, capital planning is the basis for the LDC.
States of peace types of LDCs have been proven throughout the state that have waste, fraud and abuse in such terms.
And where was that, when was that quote, Ron?
There's two comptroller's reports, both from twenty eleven to twenty fifteen.
So that was, one was thirteen years ago and the other one.
I have something a little more recent, I'd like to quote from the incorporation papers that were put in front of us. To, this LDC would be, would be empowered to apply for loans and borrow money without limits.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wait a second. This, I'm sorry, whoa, 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 whoa. I'm sorry, you've already interrupted me several times. You said this was about LDCs.
Hold on.
And then you immediately put a resolution on the table to disband the capital planning advisory committee. So this is about both capital planning and LDCs. LDCs came out of capital planning.
There's no need, there's no need to shout. Nothing, first of all, nothing is being approved or submitted to the public or to this board. We're, we're working through this, we're trying to come up with a capital plan to, to solve the issues that we're facing. You just saw, we just went through a slideshow which presented multiple issues. What's that?
I drew three pages of notes on this slide.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just saying, it's not enough information for the public.
Right, there's more information, this is the beginning.
Plenty of information, sir. Here are the capital projects that have been completed with us humble villagers. Library, over ten million dollars, new war, two million dollars. A movie theater at the, just dirt, twelve million dollars. Church. Private sector, a few million dollars. And, and I can rely and, and. All this has been done by activist groups in the village, however they got the money and those are some important, I think pretty impressive lists. So this is the old fashioned way and I, I don't think a lot of people watching.
So, just to be clear, I am not going to sign off on anything unless this board agrees to it. This is the governing body of our village. If we can't come up with a solution together, then, then there is no solution. So I just want to make that clear. I want everybody, hang on.
How can the board agree to it without having public input?
Well, that's why we're here, Phil.
Okay, but.
It's exactly why we're here.
Seeing questions resolved, there's a comment period later.
No, I, listen, if somebody has a question, they can raise their hand and step forward. Deputy Mayor Hay is making a presentation, let's let him get through it and then we'll get to questions. He might have the answer in his presentation. Maybe not. How much longer do you have, Ed? Go ahead, continue.
No, we can, we can, we can end there.
We can end with the questions, okay, who has a question? All right, so Ron, do you want to finish what you were presenting and then we'll go to other questions?
Didn't mean to jump in like that, but we're talking about LDCs, I think it's. I think it's, it's important to explain to the public what an LDC actually is and the prime abuse that it's had over the couple of decades that they've been in existence. The state comptroller's office has at least a couple of reports and actually tried to pass legislation in twenty eleven because the issue is the state comptroller's office has no audit authority on LDCs. And he has written two reports, or his office has written two reports that, that these LDCs are entities that are used to avoid constitutional and statutory procedures in the New York State Constitution. The other document that I have was written by.
Ron, can I address that question first? That the state comptroller has no audit authority? We can simply agree to audit authority of an LDC by the state comptroller. The, the public authorities board has audit authority since the state comptroller's report came out in two thousand and eleven. The public authority board was up and running, has audit authority over LDCs, but we can also specifically agree to give the state comptroller audit authority over any, any LDC we create. And we can also, and we will also have independent financial audits, which is why creating three, four, five, ten, twenty LDCs would be very administratively burdened, so.
Well, he also reiterated that in twenty fifteen report that he did. And he also has been trying to pass legislation to give him a lot of authority over all of LDCs.
And we'd be happy to do that.
So. I just want that to be clear because it's kind of an LDC and no one knows anything about this thing. I've been involved in a lot of major public projects, mostly in New York City. And we've never used an LDC process through these, we would use other avenues. And I just, a couple, I just have a couple of questions for the board.
I'm sorry, Ron, you're saying New York City doesn't use LDCs for major projects?
They have some LDCs in the city. There's certain authorities, because I've worked with a lot of state authorities like Port of York, Comptertory Authority, state, you know, state educational authority. And none of those use because they have different avenues funding, right?
But the city of New York does use LDCs.
They have used them in.
So do several state agencies, that pair, state development corporation, puts in a whole has transportation, finance authority that is an LDC. Sorry, just listing some.
Right, that, the, the, the state, the state comptroller's office mentions these type of things and the reason that they have the LDCs under those is because they're under different state agencies, so those agencies that are controlling those LDCs are on. The state. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm just going by what I've read in the reports. I think that the, the other issue that we have at a hat here is that I don't disagree that we have a committee or a group that would need to put together and understand first comprehensive planning, which would be part of all of this. If you did comprehensive planning, everything we're talking about today would be part of that, that plan.
Of course.
Just to, yeah, Ron, just to say something about that. I agree with that, but we're, we're getting prepared. That plan is going to come. We're, we're in the process of waiting for the contract from the New York State that we got the grant to pay for that plan. In the meantime, we're not going to sit on our hands, we're going to be prepared and put things in place so when that plan finally comes, we have the vehicles to get there. Now Duncan, if I could just, Duncan Darrell said, mentioned a bunch of projects that we did the old fashioned way, right? That we got accomplished. The only project that I think you mentioned Duncan was Long Wharf, which was a village owned asset, which was also, we got a major grant from New York State from that.
We've got about, I think, one and a half, two million out of the five.
Right, out of the five million. So that was one project out of those many. You know, the question is, Ron, like this, we show, we, all those challenges that we face. How do we get there?
Can I ask a really dumb?
Conventionally, conventionally.
I have a really dumb question and all of this, and it goes to the core of funding of an LDC. It's being presented as if it can sort of like fashion funds out of the ether. But when we look at, I can understand a project that has positive cash flow, how that can be used to repay a bond. But if I look at something, say an LDC, the first, the first projects you showed was surface water runoff. Great, so where's the cash flow on that? Like who, I need to know who pays for this bond and how is this bond rated? Whose rating is the bond on? Like money is money and if the LDC borrowed this money on behalf of the village to do this great work and I don't disagree with any of those projects. We all know those projects. I've been around this village on this board for eight years, I've been around the village for thirty years. They're all out there and they all need to be addressed. My issue is with giving this control to, but hold on, let me finish it. Giving this control to an outside body, if you read through here, there's one member of the LDC. The member of the LDC is the village of Sag Harbor. The village of Sag Harbor is represented through the office of the mayor. There is nowhere have I seen in here that there is any way that the board of trustees have any input or control. And when I look at things in the certificate of incorporation that they can, you know, can borrow money with no limit. Why would we give that control to unelected people to a committee that it says in here, lives in perpetuity? I just, there's such fundamental issues in all of these documents. I mean, we could sit here and read through this and I think we should to come and sit and read every single and parse every single word in here. There's stuff, stuff in here that is like, it's terrifying.
There's, that, that is exactly what's in the comptroller's.
That is something I would not accept. I would not accept taking unlimited loans without the oversight of the board of trustees. But that is not being adopted. That was not even presented.
This is what was in the meeting on the thirty first, this was the meeting, this was the action.
That was, was pulled from the agenda on the thirty first.
So can we say this is dead?
That's dead. Absolutely.
That wouldn't be the good place to start.
We did. We said, we pulled it.
This is dead, we don't have to be concerned about that.
No, whatever we do, we're going to do it together as a board with input from the residents, that's how it's going to work.
All right, then I don't need to refer to this anymore.
Let me address something you said, which is those projects that we talked about, those very high priority projects. Many of those have to be taxpayer funded, many of those will not be used for the LDC. Some may have opportunities for the LDC to play in them.
I understand.
With both commercial and municipal purpose. That list means that we never get to any other projects if those are our top priorities and we probably will make those our top priorities as a village and have to find the funding or try to find the funding for those. Things like this building and the firehouse, don't make that list. Havens Beach doesn't make that list, maybe the stormwater work does, but the rest of Havens Beach, making that a more usable piece of property for the community doesn't make the list. It can make the list through the LDC.
I honestly wish we, we should use other avenues of LDCs. If you read, if you read the comptroller's report of examples around the state of these things, there are many examples of failure in LDCs and the only people that are left holding the bag are the taxpayers.
That, that's unacceptable.
And also, just reiterate, when LDCs first kind of came about.
Can't assume what he's saying is factual.
A lot of them came up with in upstate communities that were economically depressed and needed funding to.
Close down nursing homes.
Yeah, that was one, right? So, you know, it's become an avenue for other municipalities to get around, you know.
Ron, I hate to, I don't want to cut you off, but I, I got other people in the audience that would like to have input, so.
I have, I don't want to talk about it.
Yes, thank you, definitely.
You could submit it.
Wait, Trusty Plum would like to speak, go ahead, sir.
And you, you've said that one of the primary differences between an LDC and the bonding process is an LDC can be financed with revenue.
Yes.
Are you suggesting that the firehouse would generate enough revenue from some kind of rent to pay for the, let's call it restoration?
Yes. Yes, we've already been, the village has been approached, again, not you, but the village has been approached to use the firehouse for a commercial.
Let's be clear, fire museum.
Fire museum, I'm sorry, the fire museum. For a commercial purpose.
You talked about the firehouse.
I'm talking about the fire museum.
Fire museum.
Fire museum, yeah, we're talking about the fire museum.
Okay, so my point, and then for example, you talk about this building too. Are you suggesting we rent the upstairs? Just asking.
No, I'm actually suggesting we use the upstairs.
And put storefronts in front, right?
Potentially look, examine the opportunity of retail space in the front porch.
But there, but there you go, if the public doesn't want that, it's not going to happen because we're the board that represents them. What's that? Ed is sitting right next to me.
I'm listening, I'm listening.
He can hear what, what I'm saying.
But no proposal, no feasibility study, if you're saying, do not do a feasibility study, we want, don't want to move forward, we don't want to touch this? That's a different thing.
This is putting the cart before the horse.
It's not putting the cart before the horse.
It is, you should have a plan and a monetary study. Before you even engage.
Yes.
The conversation.
You should have an analysis.
I agree.
Exactly.
We should do a feasibility study.
Feasibility and a financial analysis. Yes, Mr. Croxton, would you like to say something?
Yes. My name is Randolph Croxton. My name is Randolph Croxton. I've been a resident of the village for thirty-eight years and I would like to just read a letter from, on behalf of state Sag Harbor into the record. We, in, in doing so, I think it loops in a lot of the discussion that's happened until now. However, we had no other choice than to address the resolution that was told because that's all the information we had when we walked through the door. So I'll proceed to read the letter. Dear Mayor Gardella and members of the board of trustees, we write regarding the resolution that you are scheduled to discuss today to form a local development corporation. As an organization devoted to protecting the character, quality of life and welfare of Sag Harbor, we have questions and concerns about this proposed LDC. We understand that LDCs have been used by state and local governments to undertake projects that might be slower or more cumbersome to carry out through existing governmental processes. However, LDCs have fewer transparency and accountability requirements than elected governments, which in many cases has resulted in waste and abuse. And I have a specific footnote here, which is this is why New York State comptroller Lewis De Napoli led a years-long campaign for a law finally passed in twenty nineteen, authorizing the comptroller's office to audit LDCs across the state. The state senate noted at the time, all too frequently, LDCs have been riddled with corruption resulting in a significant waste of taxpayer dollars. Elsewhere in New York State, mismanagement of some LDCs has caused taxpayers tens of millions of dollars and even led to criminal indictments. Mayor Gardella's administration has made a commitment to transparency, much appreciated by our organization. This resolution was a disappointing lapse. It should never have appeared on a village board of trustees agenda for a vote with no advance notice to the public. As proposed, this, and this is important, the metrics of the LDC as proposed, which that's all we have the ability to address. An unelected body would have enormous powers that would normally only lie with our elected board of trustees and mayor. It might accomplish important things for Sag Harbor, but it could also create enormous problems. The board owes it to the public to air these issues and answer questions in public hearings beyond this meeting. Before a step of this magnitude is taken. An LDC can issue bonds that the village and its taxpayers will ultimately be liable for. The resolution in question sets no limit on how much debt the LDC can take on. No one has been, no one in the public has been given any idea of what LDC is intended to finance, although some have come up in this meeting or how many millions of dollars it plans to borrow, what kinds of projects it is going to take on. The resolution speaks of working with for-profit entities, but we have no idea which ones or what kind, real estate developers, contractors, consultants. In addition to providing voters with those specifics, due diligence for those proposing the LDC requires sharing examples with the public of other towns or villages that have specifically been successful using LDCs for similar projects to the scale of Sag Harbor and also seeking out examples of LDCs that have had problems that we need to avoid. The resolution specifies no end date for an LDC, the LDC, nor any term limits for its board members who have been selected with no public consultation. The number of unanswered questions above provides little confidence that the LDC will go about its business with transparency and accountability. To be clear, Sag, Sag Harbor is not taking a position for or against a specific LDC in principle. But we want to strongly express our concern that it would be a mistake to rush into the creation of one with this ambiguity. Okay, waiting for who? The board to decide how it's going to govern itself? That is job one. It requires ample public involvement. You are sincerely, it's a forward. Yours sincerely, the board.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Exactly, thank you. Thank you.
And I'd say that we agree with virtually everything Mr. Croxton just said. I agree. I'm going to speak for myself only. And that we have pulled, if we weren't clear, if I wasn't clear, we pulled that before the June meeting. We have never put it back out. We are here to discuss an L D C. But we're not here to discuss that specific proposal. That is not on the table. It has never been on the table for a vote. It's not on the table for a vote now.
I object, it was on the table for votes, sir.
That's, that's not fair.
It was on the table.
I don't want to rehash, I don't want to rehash this. I think I thought I made my statement clear. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann N A ninety six Hampton Street, does that work?
No.
Just speak out.
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can.
Speak loudly.
All right, so a couple of quick points. One, reading that document, which is all we had to go on, I saw economic development, economic development, economic development, economic development. And sort of in parallel to what Aiden said earlier, it's like, where are we going with that? What's, give us, what we're aspiring to? Do we want to be Ball Harbor? Do we want to be Hyannis? Do we want to be, I don't know, Newport? What do we think we're developing Sag Harbor into? Because I think we really want to know what the end game is here. Port Washington, I have a friend who lives in Port Washington, he comes to Sag Harbor, he's nostalgic, he's sad. He says Port Washington used to have the look and feel of Sag Harbor, and it doesn't anymore. So I think we really need to be careful. Where are we going with this? And the other thing is, is who's talking about the environment? One of the things, I did not hear that word once in any of this. We have major work consideration to be doing about hazard mitigation, and I don't hear that at all. And the other thing, the last point in this building, as Randy says, this is all upside down and backwards. There shouldn't be a, a meeting about, of documents. There should be outreach. We should be talking to Saigat Sag Harbor first. We should be talking to the historic black communities. We should be talking to the nonprofits. We should have meetings not at two o'clock on a Monday. We should have times when working people can come. Weekenders should come. This is a big deal, and I think it should not be minimized as how much community input really deserves to be considered in something like.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You did talk about the involvement.
We did, that was tough, tough. I'm, I think we did, but that was a long time ago.
That was like, an hour ago. Anybody else? Peter Acocello, please. I'm sorry, I recognize all these people. No, the people on, the people on, on Zoom, they'll have to hear you.
I have a simple question.
Please, all the way.
Thirty-five years, although I don't know why we always have to say how many years we lived here. If a citizen has lived here for five days and pays taxes, they're entitled to speak. I have a question for Mr. Hey. A couple of weeks ago, you guys presented in your bid for reelection. This is such an important issue. Why did you not focus on it then?
Yeah, yeah.
You never mentioned L D C in your presentation at all. And it would have given all of us an opportunity to go to our googles and find out that it's rife with abuse.
I agree. Yeah, yeah.
You want to talk a lot?
Anybody else have anything, questions or something to say?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Tony Brandt.
He's been well.
I know, Tony.
Do you want to do someone online?
All right, as soon as Tony's finished speaking, we'll get to the Zoom.
Uh, I'm Tony Brandt. I was for seven years the head of the architectural review board. And I bring a shitload of experience to working with the people here and with developers. Believe me, this whole thing feels somewhat rushed.
Yes.
It comes at us out of nowhere. The first thing I know about it is I'm reading about it in the Sag Harbor Express. That's great. It should have been talked about indefinitely. Because this is really the most important issue that I can think of in this community right now. It feels like you're trying to see, you're trying to move the responsibility for development here out of the village board into an organization which is appointed rather than voted for. I voted for all you guys. I know some of you personally. I especially know Tom Gardella, who is our plumber, and a great guy, and a great administrator. And I don't, I don't want to see this happen. I don't see this as a future of Sag Harbor. I see the future of Sag Harbor in individual and suppression of development. We are a unique community. And everybody who knows anything about communities like this is they get co-opted, they get taken over by developers who see, oh, people like this kind of place as opposed to the suburbs that we built up. They don't want their suburbs. They'd rather come here for the weekend, for the week, for a vacation. Because this place preserves what is lost in most of the rest of America. I moved here a long time ago. I moved here to be with my wife, who was here ahead of me. And I've never regretted it. It reminds me of the places I grew up. I'm an old guy, as everybody can see by looking at me. I've been here, I've been around, I'm eighty-seven years old. It scares me when I think of it, because I don't, I don't have much longer. But I want to live here as long as I possibly can. We can afford the wash case factory, we can afford the plumbing thing. We have to stay here. And making that easy for us is what counts for it. And I feel it counts for a whole lot of people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Johnny.
On Zoom?
You have somebody on Zoom?
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is George Eckvirki. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, hi, how is everybody? Um, I'm calling from Eastville Community Historical Society, where I'm the executive director. I am also on the board of the Preservation League of New York State, where I am the vice president. Let me turn on my screen. And I am also the president of the Museum Association of New York. Today, I heard a lot of things that need to be done and projects that need necessary attention. And they have to be taken care of. For Eastville, we can be considered a village asset, and that worries me that we will be pushed out for commercial use. And just as a reminder, that Eastville was, came into existence, the Heritage House Museum, museum came into existence because the community members lobbied the East Hampton Town to take it off the tax rolls through the seventy-two age process to have it be transferred to the village for our usage. Um, so that does worry me when, because we could be the museum or the other level that is possibly considered for commercial use. And we know that there's a historic and heritage culture that we preserve and keep there. I also wanted to talk about some of the alternatives that people may have thought about. And one thing I do think is that we do need a plan to move forward. You know, a lot of these projects need to be shovel ready, so that means they need the assessments, they need the traffic study, they need the feasibility study, et cetera. But then after the study, there should be an implementation plan. One of the things that I wanted to point out in regards to land purchases and property purchases, which doesn't cover all, but it covers some of the historic properties, which, you know, the fact that Sag Harbor has the pleasure of being situated in East Hampton Town and South Hampton Town. And the C P F Fund has considerable money that we could use in the future to help us support with historic and significant properties. Um, the other thing that I'd like to also add is that the E P A has regional grants available. Um, the, on the epa.gov to, to address some of the concerns. Also, the D E C has climate smart communities grants. They also have municipal zero emissions grants that are available. And they have fifteen million dollars in quality care, water quality care grants. Also, another, another grant and resource for funding that I contacted the village in regards to some of the things that we're trying to do is the Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Grants, where they also offer a lot of money to our communities. And let us not forget the E J C funds that are available to us from New York State for protection of our water and land. Also, I'd like to offer up for consideration is the Department of State of Planning and Development. They have an array of grants for local water quality, for smart growth, resiliency planning and community infrastructure. So I hope in moving forward, that while we're looking at a variety of ways to address these very necessary projects, that we consider that there are already alternatives built in for our local government to access them. As an expert that is trained, not only trained and practiced in historic preservation, resiliency and land use, uh, and municipal zoning laws, I would definitely offer up my expertise to be a part of anything that moves further, further that considers a variety of ways to address the projects that are necessary. And I also caution that please do not hurt in any way or try to remove Eastville from our Heritage House Museum as a result of commercial use. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Catherine?
Hi.
Hi.
I had a prepared statement, but I tore it up at the beginning of this meeting. Um, I, I voted for the mayor, I voted for some of the people on the Board of Trustees. This, this whole process and this meeting have been mismanaged. Um, the process of coming up with the resolution for the corporation was much too secretive. I believe that New York's open meetings laws were violated. Um, most people in this village, by most people I mean, except for Mayor Gardella and the deputy mayor, didn't know that any of this was happening until June eleventh. That cannot be a good process on the face of it. Um, whatever amount of money was spent by this law firm is our money. And we needed to be much more involved in this, in the consideration of this mechanism and in the entire process. And I'm going to speak bluntly. Um, the deputy mayor brought up to Main Street, and that brings up the elephant in the room. There are a group of multimillionaires and billionaires, or maybe it's one billionaire, who have a vision for this village. The first we heard of it was the Bay Street Theater Vision. Then we heard about the hundred and nine thousand square foot shopping center on Bridge Street. Um, then we heard about Local Law Twelve. Then we heard about the floating affordable housing zone. Now it's this. I think that these are instruments to implement the vision of multimillionaires and billionaires who want to see this community be a very different community from the one that my dear friend Tony Brandt wants to see, and that the vast majority of people in this community want to see. When I started to research L D Cs, I was shocked that anybody on this board would even consider using this mechanism, particularly in the way that it's drafted in this resolution. It's completely open-ended. We could be having a partner, a for-profit entity. Would that be related real estate run by Steve Ross in New York? It could be anybody. It could be anything. The remake of the waterfront and the roads could be to gussy up this village in a way that the billionaires want when they, when they park their yachts at Long Wharf. And Mr. Mayor, people have been talking about this village, about this in this village for the last three years. And everyone I've spoken to in the last two weeks has been talking about this. And I know that you're a good man who only cares about the good of this village. But you need to be aware that you are not bringing people together here. You are dividing this village in a way that I'm sure you don't want to happen. So the, the message should not be, we are going to get this done, whether you want it, citizens of Sag Harbor or not. This is our village. I believe in democracy. I love what trustee Corish said. I don't feel the need to be rescued from the burden of governance. I would add, I don't feel the need to be rescued from the burden of governance and democracy. We should finally have our comprehensive plan. We need village-wide meetings. We need to decide, not the L L Cs behind Adam Potter. And this board needs to be much more engaged with us and responsive to us. And if you're looking for somebody who's good at capital planning, I would suggest my roommate here at two forty-four Madison Street, who's been the C E O and C F O of major corporations, who interestingly was not invited to be on this capital planning organization. Thanks a lot.
Douglas left? Douglas?
Douglas.
All right.
Yeah.
Anybody else besides Douglas? Go ahead, Douglas.
There are a couple of.
Douglas Trump.
There are a couple of other people. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, trustees, um, this whole beating, in my view, has completely missed the point, again, to be blunt. Um, I was horrified on June tenth when I saw the agenda. I understand that perhaps the resolution has been pulled, but the resolution should never have been there. And in a moment, I will come back to that. And I will also say that this morning, prior to this meeting, I submitted a letter to the Sag Harbor Express, which, uh, sets out my concerns before this meeting. But unfortunately, my concerns are greater now than they were, uh, an hour and a half ago. The deputy mayor has laid out his vision for a broad-based development company. That is what the L D C that was proposed would have been. Let me be clear, I have written, I have negotiated, I have critiqued corporate formation documents. This document, as presented, or as almost presented, would have given extraordinary power to a group of unelected people and would have provided that the elected people on the board would continue in office even after they ceased to be elected. So there was no oversight. And I am very upset that village money has been spent on a bad proposal. But the authority of the L D C as proposed, not only as the deputy mayor has acknowledged, is it looking at the possibility of acquiring properties outside the village? The document had written, it could buy properties in Rochester. There is no control other than being in the state. And as several people have said, L D Cs are generally intended for larger communities in economic decline. So often, we seem to forget the Sag Harbor Village is tiny. It's less than two square miles of land. And why don't we stop trying to solve all the world's problems right here? Economic decline is not the first thing that comes to people's minds when they think of Sag Harbor. The C P A C was tasked with analysis and advice, but instead, short-circuited the process. That is unacceptable, and there is a time where it is important to, as John Hackling said fifteen months ago, it's time for a do-over. And instead of trying to fix it, restart it, rethink it in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, which I believe is on the verge of getting approval, may already have approval from New York State to proceed. But my final comment, and I apologize to all. But my final comment, and I apologize to all the members of the board for what I'm about to say, this is also in my letter to the Sag Harbor Express. Sadly, this is not the first time that the board review process has been rushed. In April 2023, the County Supreme Court found that this board, oh, sorry, the board at the time, failed to follow due process. And that is the reason that it overturned LL 12. Monday night, a week before last Christmas, draft legislation was introduced right before a public workshop much like this that would have created an affordable workforce housing floating zone, handing power to the board. Mr. Mayor, Trustees, you've been elected to manage the village on behalf of its residents. It should not be necessary to take legal action to overturn a law that was improperly enacted. And it should not be necessary for us to carefully examine every action item, every line of every agenda to ensure that nothing is being slipped past us. I urge this newly organized board, as of noon, I guess today, to take a step back, carefully review not only what decisions you make, but how you make them. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas.
Thanks, Doug.
Lisa Dethsmore? Lisa? Lisa's up. We'll get to you, Steve.
You.
Okay, thank you.
Not yet. Lisa's going first. She's on mute.
Okay.
Lisa, you have to unmute.
I just did. Good afternoon, Mayor Gardella and Trustees. Thank you for hosting this working session. I'm Lisa Stenson Desmore, President of the Sag Harbor Hills Improvement Association. I echo several of the comments already shared, so I will be brief. Just raising some questions whether any of the members of the Capital Planning and Advisory Committee that the village created live in our HBBC community, which comprises a third of the village. And it would be helpful for at least one person from our HBBC to participate on that committee. I was glad to hear that there are some concerns with the corporate documents that have been released. Their concerns from a corporate formation and governance perspective. It's, I've certainly never seen any bylaws that would have boards that don't have any specified terms. And typically, board members may serve on a rolling basis. So wondering whether there's been any other comparably sized municipality as the Village of Sag Harbor in the East End or in Downstate New York, which has created a similar type of LDC as the Village of Sag Harbor is proposing, and how successful that has been. So looking forward to more meetings with village input from the community before proceeding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Williams, I was next.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm not going to repeat the very eloquent words of people who preceded me in terms of management and administration of this process. I just want to remind everybody that we're in, as was said earlier, a two-square-mile piece of property where demand certainly exceeds supply. We can't get parking spaces. We can't get anything. And we spent money rebuilding the Long Wharf. It was a wonderful project, beautiful project. And now you can't see because there's curtains of mega yachts on both sides of its longest length exposure. So what is the village in financial trouble? Do we need to take our historic firehouse museum and monetize that? Do we need to take our village office, which is easily accessible, and bathrooms that are accessible for the public, and monetize that?
Can I interrupt you, Steve, for a second? Are you saying, are you asking us if financially we're in trouble?
I'm asking you, what is the motivation here? Because I, I think we're losing.
I'm not saying we need to monetize anything. What I'm saying, I said it at the beginning of this meeting, is that every year, to meet that two-and-a-half percent cap, we have to dip into our reserves. Otherwise, we're going to have to cut discretionary spending to the point where we're not going to be able to function. And we have these assets. I don't even want to call them assets. We have a fire museum. We have this building. We have other buildings in the village that need work. They need to be improved. So that's, that's why I said, so if you're going to, if we're going to continue on this path, we're going to continue to dip into our reserves. At some point, we're going to run out of money. And we're going to be coming to the taxpayers, going to get hit very severely.
I, I think that, let me say this. I'm sure that you've done a financial pro forma, which indicates that the, the financial upgrades of, of these facilities or making them, leasing them to third-party operators makes sense. And, and I just think that somehow we might need to find a different way for cash revenue. It seems that the village is trying to be frugal. It seems like the school board is less concerned about tax rolls and, and tax. To hear they're doing a new gym, jeez, I don't know what was the matter with the current gym. But, you know, so it just seems, this seem, I feel that we're killing what we love, just as people have killed the environment for profit on a global basis. It seems that we're killing our quality of life here on a, on a village basis for profit. Let's find some other ways not to decimate Sag Harbor with high-end retail stores, very expensive restaurants, and parking problems, pollution problems, and blanketed by mega yachts. Somewhere, there's got to stop. That's the, that's the conclusion of my comments.
Okay, we have another gentleman?
Comprehensive plan.
Yes, we're working on it. What?
Eileen Rosenberg and Michael Firestein.
John Parker is here.
All right, hang on.
I'm sorry.
All right, that's right. Let me take one more person on Zoom, John, then I'll get to you. Michael Firestein, is that who's up?
Yeah, he's been there for a long time.
Yeah.
Let's, let's hear from Michael. Michael, can you hear me?
He's on mute.
You're on mute.
How's that?
That's it.
Okay, this is kind of a follow-up to what Mr. Williams just said. It relates a little bit to what Ed Hay, one of the subjects he raised, the idea of opportunity cost. But the need to, to have access to capital. I, I'm wondering, we, we talk about having to dig into the capital reserve when we run out of current funds, I guess. Can you give us an idea of what that capital reserve fund is? How much do we have?
I believe it's around eleven, eleven, twelve million, eleven million dollars. I believe right now, we're at about eleven million dollars. And then we had to, first of all, my department, one of my departments, our department, our police department, we had, we were proposing to hire another police officer. God knows, we need law enforcement. But we've had to pull that back to, to save money on dipping into the resources. So we wound up only dipping in for six hundred thousand dollars this year to stay at the 2.5% cap. So this is a practice that's been going on for past administrations. And at some point down the future, if the costs continue to go up, we keep dipping into the reserves, we're going to run out of money.
Can I, can I, do we have a surplus this year?
Can I say something in addition to that, though, that we're dipping in the reserves? And we're only planning one year at a time, two years at a time. There are no capital projects that we're paying for now on that list that we went for, except for the sewage treatment plant. All those other capital projects have been deferred for decades. We're not even touching that yet. We're not spending one dime on many of those yet, except for study after study after study. No one, in order to implement millions of dollars, tens of million of dollars, and to do them all, potentially hundreds of millions of dollars would have to be raised. So Aiden had said something to me, which was, I want to discuss. He said, he asked you if we were in a surplus. And from time to time, we do get into a surplus, Aiden. But that surplus isn't, it still goes into the reserve. We're still behind. It's not enough to carry us over.
I'd also say, our revenues last couple of years have exceeded our expectations.
Right, yeah.
And what that does, it enables us to spend more on things that we weren't going to do, add a position, or do some repairs. So we've typically spent most of that, not all of it.
Right.
But it's.
I, I agree, we shouldn't be dipping into our reserves to balance the budget every year, which has been the habit since I've been, this is my eighth year on the board. And I think almost every year, we've done that on the assumption that we're going to have some surplus at the end of the year, just to keep things moving. But I, I don't disagree that we have these really big capital projects. And the fact that this is off the table right now, I think we've created a space where we can actually start a dialogue and a conversation about which projects we need to prioritize. And that process will come through developing a comprehensive plan, because that's what the plan will do. It'll look at everything holistically. It'll allow us to take that thirty-thousand-foot view of the village and get all the input that we need from everybody. This should not be one man's vision. You know, this needs to be the vision of the village. This is not my village. This is all of our village. And we share, we're only two thousand people in two square miles. You know, we need to be able to protect what we have. And we need to be able to move ahead with these projects in, in a sustainable way. We haven't talked about at all about how all this gets funded, because LDCs don't create money out of, like, thin air, out of the ether. Somewhere, somebody's got to pay for it. And I don't know if we're going to even get there today. Because at this stage, we've run over our lot of time. There's so much to do.
There's one thing I want to say, okay? And this is a personal thing for me. Every time I go to the firehouse, I'm talking to the firefighters there. They're asking me, what's going on with the museum? When are we going to be able to put our stuff back in the museum? They took, we took all our history out of there. The fire department had purchased that property in Bridgehampton. It's sitting there.
So let's look at that project. I mean, I'm really a hundred percent on board. Let's put, identify what that building needs. Do we need an architect? If we, if we think we need revenue, you know, can we get some real estate person to say what revenue is available within the, the envelope of the building that's copacetic with the nature of the building? How do we move? What does the museum look like? Do we need a museum designer?
We're talking about it. We're talking about it now.
But that's, I think, how, not this sort of one, one committee fits all in perpetuity. That's the part that I don't get.
Tommy, you and I toured the museum.
Yes.
And it is a fantastic old building that you really can't put a price on, per se. Plus, as Tom said, there's a ton of stuff that they have in storage. And it could be so cool and just rehabilitated. And there's, one of my points is that there's, in the, it's hard to describe or hard to quantify the value of the history that's there. But you wouldn't say, let's put condos in the Statue of Liberty.
No, no.
It'd be a great idea, a few windows, who's going to notice? I mean, that's, I think, personally, I think that's important.
So let me get back to Mr. Firestein. I'm sorry, we got a little bit off topic there, but we're just trying to work through this. So continue what you were saying, sir.
No, no, I just, you know, I was concerned, we're, we're talking about capital, to, to know what, what the village has in reserve if something comes up as an emergency or an opportunity comes up where you might want to dig in to not lose what Ed Hay said is the opportunity cost and figure that you'd have to raise some money afterwards to replenish the reserve. So I just want to know how much comfort the village has right now to deal with a potential emergency in the water system. And eleven million dollars, it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but in terms of big projects, but I, I think that's a relevant fact to know.
Thank you. Is anybody else on Zoom or?
Yes.
Who?
Eileen Rosenberg.
And that she's the last one on Zoom?
Sarah Cotts and Dr. Georgia Gravikis, raise your hand.
So who raised their hand in the audience? Who want to go to the audience?
John.
John Parker.
Ready, now?
Yeah, well, Laura, you had your hand up before too, right?
Yeah.
So come forward.
I'll spend a little bit of a curve up here. But it seems to me like everyone has the interest of the village at heart. It also seems, there's a sense of urgency, because the wastewater is a big problem. We're not going to find people who like going to the cinema, they're not going to back up a twenty-million-dollar wastewater program, right? It's not going to happen. And it seems to me like the, the horse has gone before, I mean, the cart's gone before the horse here, rushing to get an LDC. I, I think that this is a small enough village, and there's enough, there's substantial talent on the group of people you put together. And I think getting the comprehensive plan together with a way of financing our priorities, that can all be done in this room. We do not need, no offense, a fancy lawyer. We do not, we don't. We, we have so much combined experience in this room. And, you know, in my mind, you're like, you have eleven million dollars. You needed four hundred thousand or five hundred for a new, well, what, who's managing the eleven million, million dollars? You should have six hundred thousand dollars in interest coming out of that. I, I don't know how that.
We do have, do invest, yes.
So, you know, it's like, okay, like, this is our kitchen table here. It isn't, there isn't anyone smarter than, than what's in this room right now. We have the knowledge, we have the concern and the care. I do not see a fractious situation here. I, I see some people got their noses out of joint because of the process to try to drive us. I, there's a sense of urgency that I appreciate. And that we do need, we do need to be able to flush our toilets in something other than the bay. We just do.
Yes.
And, and that is not a fun, fancy thing. But anyhow, I, I don't see a problem. I see loads of solutions here. That's all I.
Thank you, Laura. So just on that note, Laura, you know, I happen to be of Italian descent. Aiden's Irish. So every once in a while, me and him go at it.
But then we love each other.
Yeah, then we said to each other, let's go, we're going to have a beer after this.
Yeah.
Like, that's part of the whole.
This is a process.
Yeah, that's just how we get to where we need to get to. Sometimes it's not very smooth and very pretty, but somehow we get there. So, John, you want to, Mary Ann, I, I want to try to get through everybody that didn't speak. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, John Parker, thirty-three, uh, uh. I've been checking off the things I was planning to say, and about twelve of them have already been covered more eloquently than I have with my previous speakers. So I'm going to be fairly quick. It seems to me that part of this is, is backwards. We're, we're looking at funding for projects that haven't been defined. Ed listed a, a number of projects, a number of environmental projects. And there's money available for those. I've been working with Aiden and others for the past eight years on projects involving the, the sewage treatment plant and extending that. We now have about twelve million dollars, you know, for that. And we voted the resolution to go out to bid today at the, at the earlier meeting. Be doing construction in the fall, hopefully, on the first phase of that. We need about another ten million or more. We're working on it, you know. Yep, going for the next phase. But the point there i- is that that project has been defined. We were able to go out and get grant monies. We were able to go out and get grant monies, which, which should pay for, for all of it. So the other projects that Ed mentioned are, are defined. And, and there's money available for it. And, and there are deadlines for grants coming up later this month, which we could be applying for money for those projects for. At least as far as I know, we're, we're not. So again, seems to be backwards to be looking at the capital funding for projects you haven't defined, when those could be submitted for grants that wouldn't cost the village any much. And I think that's important, and we need to know if, if, Ed, would you go down the list of projects that you talked about and, and look and shoot to find who's working on them? You know, where is it? I, I know that there's some projects that you listed. We've already got grant money for. We haven't utilized the grant money. We've let it lapse. And that's got to be fixed.
Yep.
Okay, who else is on Zoom? I'm, I'm going to, we're going to have a hard stop at four o'clock. So is there anybody else on Zoom? Eileen? She's mute, we can't hear you, Eileen.
Good afternoon. I won't go through the pros and cons of something that is no longer on the table, and people have already voiced their opinions, I think. But Mayor Gardella, you initially started with, you're really looking for community input. And I think before anything goes forward, that would be essential. Can I suggest, this is just a suggestion going forward, that for future meetings, it's a holiday week, on Monday.
that for future meetings, it's a holiday week, on Monday, midday, a lot of people might not be available. Perhaps we can look towards times that are more readily accessible by working people. You know, the six o'clock, you know, similar to the other board meetings you hold. And that would be a way to hear more public input on such an important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Who?
Sarah.
Sarah?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, trustees. I'm, I'm a new resident, but I've been working in the community for a long time. I just wanted to say, I agree with all the excellent comments of many people who spoke before me. I also wanted to just point out that, of course, I, I'm a preservation consultant. I'm also the executive director at Southampton History Museum. And, you know, Southampton Village recently did a lot of capital improvements, the parking lot, fixing up Village Hall, all these things, without a corporation model. Through grant writing, you know, the old-fashioned way, and some folks mentioned the library, John Jermaine, there, this village can do it, it's just a matter of what somebody else was just saying, leveraging all the amazing talents and input that you can receive from the community. So I'm really excited to, you know, continue this process of community input, because I think you're going to get a lot of input. And I just wanted to say, a couple of years ago, I mentioned that for the Firehouse Museum, you guys could get money from New York State right away. You're a certified local government. You could ask the State Historic Preservation Office for some grant money to assess that building. It's a village-owned property, yes?
Yes.
Yes, so call them right now, call SHPO, say you would want.
That's Sarah Couch, she's head of a nonprofit organization, very knowledgeable.
They can, they can help get you some money to do a feasibility study.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah.
Among other things. And what I also wanted to say is, part of the reason why we're in this problem with the museum is deferred.
We have to move on, Sarah, thank you. Who else? Who else?
Also, the line, the line regarding the foundation.
Right.
Yeah, like Gardner Foundation has money for these projects.
Go ahead, Phil, come on up, Phil.
I'm wondering if it would be possible to put forth a resolution then to disband the CPAC?
Well, that's, that's something.
That's on the table, I, I have introduced that, we've yet to vote on it.
Yeah.
We stepped aside after the introduction, so we can have this.
So we get, we wanted to have the discussion before we voted on it. Anybody else?
Mary Ann.
Besides, Mary Ann, come forward.
This is thirty seconds.
All right.
Really? Mary Ann, at eight ninety-six, half on three. When we were talking about the members of these various committees, one of the things that occurred to me is, I have no idea who it is that's working on the comprehensive plan, nor how those people were chosen.
There's no, we, we haven't set up the committee yet until we get the contract from the state. We've had discussions, but there's nothing set up yet.
The state will have an input as to how the committee is formed, and they'll include one member from New York State, because it's their money we're spending. It's in progress, we just need a contract.
Okay. Anybody else on Zoom or anything? Okay, so before we adjourn the meeting, we have two.
Well, if this is that zero, I can withdraw the second resolution.
Okay, all right, so we're just working on the CPAC?
Just working on the CPAC.
Okay, so you're, you're proposing the resolution.
I made a proposal, do I hear a motion?
To disband the CPAC?
Yes, that's what I, this motion was to disband CPAC, start over, new committee. I'm not saying we shouldn't be doing this. I just think this committee hasn't performed and has ignored their charter. So I'm making the motion that CPAC should be disbanded. Or you're making the motion?
Motion by trustee Kors to disband, seconded by trustee Plum. Do I have any discussion, or anybody want to input on this? I have something to say.
I, I guess I would ask the question, the work that Dave initially started, to not have that be wasted, I would like to continue them be acting as a group. That's why it always feels that we, you know, we can take this, all this information that we received today, which we appreciate and listen to, but the main thing for us to look for the best way, whatever that is, if it's the old-fashioned way, as some people are citing, or it's the grant opportunities that are out there, it's trying to not tap into the reserve, as we've discussed, and look at ways that we can most efficiently do it. And I think the reason, even though we are very aware that some, there was some abuse for villages and municipalities that set up these entities, there are ways for us to be wise and to look at all the possible holes and avoid them. So we could use this entity, this type of entity, and be wise and save a sufficient amount, because it, we haven't gotten into any of the details of how it works, but if those who, you who have read them and see if it's set up properly, it is financially advantageous for the village. So that's the work that I believe they've begun, and I would hate to lose.
No. I think that, let, let the trustees talk, and, and let's discuss this, and then we'll, we'll come up for a vote. We'll put this to a vote. Trustee Kors wants this voted on, he made a mo- motion was made a second. Let us finish what we have to do on the board. So do you have anything to say, Ed?
I've made, I've made my comments.
So I, I, so I'm going to tell you, I'm not going to vote to disband the, the committee. What I will do, hang on one second, let me speak. Everybody else had a chance to speak. What I will do, I don't need to be on that committee, okay? I can pull myself out, and I think that both trustees here, both trustee Kors and trustee Plum, should have a candidate to propose before this board to be on that committee. As far as an LDC goes, I don't think we're anywhere near proposing one or approving one until we get every, all this stuff out into the open. We're going to need more input from the public moving forward. So that's my proposal. I, I wish, let us finish, Phil.
I appreciate that, that you would withdraw from the committee.
I would withdraw.
And trustee Plum could take your place on the committee.
If the board, if the board agrees that, if the board agrees to that.
If the board agrees that.
And then I think that you should have somebody, or we should have, we need to be.
I'm happy with trustee Plum, we don't need two people, like, there's a certain size to this committee. But this committee then i- is unnoticed, that it has to abide.
Absolutely.
I think that everything here, what you, this piece of paper that you showed me, Aiden, I think all of the stuff that's on here is, is things that the CPAC is doing and should adhere to. I don't, I don't have any issues with that.
We need minutes, open meetings.
Yes.
So we need to fund, so I, we don't have the village attorney, so it puts me at a terrible disadvantage, because I'm not an attorney, I'm the, I'm an art school dropout. So we need to figure out a way so that we make a decision here that it, that will stand scrutiny, because I'm really serious about this. When I see a committee who set up, they ignore everything, and then they come up with this LDC, and they, they appoint themselves as the board of the LDC, that to me is short-circuiting everything that this village is about.
However, if it was really a discussion, I am in it, and as we've said, the cart went before the horse. That's, let's now move forward.
Well, could we not differ with a different term? So I'm going to vote for an offer of doubt. There's a, there's a motion.
Hold on, there's a motion before the board.
So I'm going to ask for a vote on the motion, so we can clear this up.
I told you, I told you what my vote was.
Yes.
I'm going to say no to disband. I will resign from the committee, and I have no problem if the board has.
But let's do that separately.
Okay.
Let's do one motion after another. So the motion's on the table, that this committee be disbanded, I made the motion. Trustee Plum has seconded.
Trustee Plum made the motion.
I seconded, and so we'll take a vote, so I'm aye.
Aye.
Trustee Kane?
No.
Trustee, Deputy Mayor Hay?
No.
I already told you that I was going to vote no, and I made a suggestion on how we can move forward with it.
Do you want to move forward with that suggestion now?
Hold on, what I would say is that the CPAC committee needs to meet in public, there needs to be notices, and what they discuss needs to be put before the public.
As it says in their charter.
Right.
Yes.
Right. So the committee still sits, and now I guess, trust, Mayor Gardella has a motion that he's going to resign.
I'm going to resign. I'm going to resign because I want a full representation from this board on that committee.
So do we now appoint trustee Plum, make a motion to appoint trustee Plum to the committee?
I'll make the motion.
So we accept it, so you're making a motion to resign.
Right, I'm, who's?
And I'll second that motion.
Okay.
And so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so now we have a motion that trustee Plum join the, I'm forgetting.
CPAC.
CPAC committee. So I will make a motion that trustee Plum join the committee. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against, nays?
Any nays, anybody opposed?
No.
Abstained?
No, I said aye.
So it's passed.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's passed unanimously, okay?
I think that if anybody on this board has anybody that they would like to put forward to be on the CPAC, they should do that, and we should have a discussion and a vote.
Okay, that might be for our next meeting at this stage, I'm not sure if anybody else.
Right.
And so would we also say next steps will be, there will be additional conversations as we look to refine exactly what projects we're going to look at and how we're going to do them?
Maybe we need to start over.
Ed's the chairperson, right? So I assume you put out a, a agenda, a schedule of meetings?
We do not have an official chairperson. We can talk about those things. The chairperson just resigned. There's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn the meeting, and we can have further workshops and discussions on this as projects come up that the CPAC might propose. Motion adjourned?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Don't move.